We'll go ahead and get to our only item of business. It's a piece of new business. And Clerk, we'll read that into the record, please.
Item one, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, adopting the Sioux Falls Health Second amended and restated regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus COVID-19. This ordinance shall become effective upon one reading and adoption pursuant to section 33.027 of the Code of Ordinances of Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Good afternoon, Jill.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Jill Franken, Public Health Director with the city of Sioux Falls. This ordinance that you have, that's been drafted and approved by the Board of Health today at 2:00 this afternoon. It's ordinance to further assist us as a community to mitigate the spread of coronavirus in our community. And we've taken a number of factors into account, and I just want to share some of that with you this afternoon. First off, when we met for an informational two days ago with you, we had a few cases of travel-related coronavirus in the counties of Minnehaha County specifically. But yesterday, we now know we have spread, community spread. Remember, we talked about that in that informational and talked about the various levels of community spread. And we actually now have substantial spread in Minnehaha County. Today, we had three new cases for a total of 16 cases in Minnehaha County, a number of those of which are related to community spread and non-travel-related. And then we also have, and that county is now in substantial spread. And then we have two cases in Lincoln County. And one of those, I believe, was new today. So we have, and then we have one in McCook County, which is of note because it's in our MSA. So I thought that would, so we have 20 total cases in our MSA of coronavirus. So the other factor, I just want to let you know that it takes into account, there's a number of guidance out there, and we talked about that on Tuesday as well. We have the President's guidance, 15 days to slow the spread. We also have Governor Noem's executive order around mitigating the spread of coronavirus. And then we have a lot of CDC guidance, community guidance, business guidance, et cetera. And so we've taken all of that into account as well. And so I'm going to go through this, the portions that I think are most notable for us to talk through, or for me to just kind of review with you. And so I'm going to start by going through the definition section. And you can see there's a definition for social distancing. That's the one that you've seen, around people being six feet apart as much as possible to avoid being able to have droplets from a cough or a sneeze, you know, come in contact with someone else. And then we also have number two and number three on there that are notable in terms of this particular ordinance. And that is, number two is enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering, as used herein in the ordinance, shall mean any enclosed facility operating as a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casino, coffee shop, recreational or athletic facility, health club, or entertainment venue. Those are the same establishment types that are in the governor's executive order, so just trying to be in keeping with that. It also, though, goes a little further to include any parking lot, patio, or other outdoor seating for such facility, so that there is an effort to not allow there to be congregating of people outside in a, like a seating area that could encourage a lot of crowd gathering and other social gathering that would be outside as well. Patron is another, and patron shall, as used herein, shall refer to a customer of the business as defined in subparagraph two. And I think there might be a change needed to that particular wording. Is that right, Stacy, or is that written correctly?
That's written correctly now.
Thank you, thank you. He may have to help a little bit because we do have an amendment or two that need to be regarded, but, and then, and above, and it does not include employees or staff of such business. So I just wanted to point that out because what we're explaining is that patrons will be considered differently than the staff of the entity. So you'll notice further where that applies. So there's kind of three areas that I want to review with you here. The first is the city-owned property, just to let you know that this ordinance does continue to ensure that our city buildings and venues will remain closed to the general public. That list is pretty much, it's the same list in our other ordinances that you've approved earlier, but it shall just state that they will remain closed. And then the next section is the section around private businesses, and I'm going to go through that in a little more detail here. So number one, under private businesses, it says, "Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering shall modify business practices in order to ensure that not more than 10 patrons are on the premises for onsite use of the services and/or consumption of the goods at any given time." So again, patrons. That doesn't take into account the staff. And so such businesses are encouraged to utilize business models that do not involve public gatherings, including takeout, delivery, drive-through, curbside service, and off-site services. So just to explain a little further, so if they have a very robust delivery or takeout or curbside service, they're probably going to need those staff to be employed there. But as far as patrons, they will be allowed to have no more than patrons patronizing their business at any given time. Okay? So then, the restrictions set forth in the paragraph, that paragraph above shall not apply to the following. And I think, should I read all those, Stacy?
I think we should.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to read through those. Healthcare facilities, residential care facilities, congregate care facilities, and correctional facilities. It also includes childcare facilities that would, this would not apply to. It would not apply to businesses that offer food and beverages solely for off-site consumption, including grocery stores, markets, convenience stores, pharmacies, drugstores, and food pantries, other than the portion of such businesses that are subject to the requirements of paragraph five of these regulations. Hotel motel room service, airport concessionaries, crisis shelters, homeless shelters, churches, soup kitchens, or other similar institutions. Traditional golf courses shall not apply to, other than any bar or restaurant associated with the golf course shall abide by the above restrictions. And then lastly, any emergency facility necessary for the response to the current COVID-19 emergency, or any other community emergency or disaster. So this, and then it goes on to say, "The businesses and entities identified in this section shall take all reasonable measures to ensure social distancing and sanitation is being utilized as is feasible, and comply with the federal and state guidelines to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Such businesses are further encouraged to consider, to the extent applicable and feasible, to provide for special access periods for populations particularly vulnerable to COVID-19." You've probably been seeing some entities that have been allowing their, like having their businesses open for special hours for high-risk populations to be able to shop and get like their groceries, et cetera. And so this would just continue to encourage that. It also is noted that nothing herein shall act or be interpreted as authorization for any off-sale alcohol beverage sales by any licensee in violation of their respective license as defined in SDCL Title 35. So those are, in that particular section, the substantive items. And then I, well, here's another, yeah, number three then. "The business entity owner and supervising manager of any business that refuses to comply with these regulations as adopted by ordinance by the city council shall be deemed in violation of the ordinance." And then it goes on to say, "All other employers, both for-profit and not-for-profit within the city of Sioux Falls are urged and encouraged to," and these are those really what's in the CDC guidelines, it's really recommending all businesses consider, businesses that are not required to, you know, be reducing, you know, following this particular ordinance. They still, though, are highly encouraged to be maintaining practices that limit social interactions, keep people apart from each other. And so it's simply saying, "They will implement procedures to ensure social distancing between persons as feasible, and ensure the business and entity operates in compliance with federal state guidelines to prevent the spread of virus causing COVID-19. Allow employees and staff to telework if possible, limit unnecessary work gatherings, and eliminate nonessential travel, and consider regular health checks, including guidance from the CDC for COVID-19 screening if possible." It also is saying to the citizens of Sioux Falls that all individuals within the city of Sioux Falls are urged and encouraged to review and practice the recommended CDC hygiene practices designed to stop the spread of the virus causing COVID-19, know the signs and symptoms, and call a healthcare provider for instructions if experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, and stay at home if sick. It also asks for them to understand that those who are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19, including those over age 60, and those suffering from respiratory or cardiac conditions, should take extra precautions and remain home if possible. And then it also asks that they implement social distancing measures and support businesses that are adjusting their business model to reduce the spread of the virus causing COVID-19, and assist those who work in essential job functions such as emergency personnel, medical professionals, and law enforcement. So then, section two, it says, "This ordinance shall remain in effect until April 8, 2020, unless extended, amended, or terminated by ordinance." That section is really, you know, we wrestled a lot with this, and we're listening to, in various sections of this ordinance, you can see where we took into consideration what you had provided in your feedback about what we should be considering when we met at informational and when I presented at informational. And so I think this gives us a chance to see, to get us something in place for two weeks. I think I mentioned this perhaps on Tuesday. If that needs to be something, we end sooner, we come back and end it sooner. If it's something we need to extend, then we extend it. Or if we need to put in something more aggressive, we do that at any time. And I can probably safely say it's possible we'll do one or the other, you know, within a week or, you know, for sure, too. So I think that that's how fluid this situation is right now. Not think, I know. Okay, and then section three is really talking about the fact, and I can let Stacy elaborate on this a little bit more, but it is speaking to the fact that anyone in violation of this order is subject to the general penalty provision listed in section 10.999 of the Code of Ordinances or a class-two misdemeanor. So that's, that's really giving you an overview. We have talked about this and sought guidance from our attorney's office and really, you know, spent a lot of lots of hours really talking about what's the right approach for our community right now, and where do we need to be going to protect our community. We really do feel this, the decision that crafted this ordinance was really taking us to the full extent that we could as, that was available to us as a city. And, you know, the fact that it would be a class-two misdemeanor, and also, the violation could be used in the future to determine issuance and renewals of liquor licenses. And so that's something that could be, something you can consider as a city council. And so really, I think that, one of the things I want to tell you is, you're probably wondering, how will we enforce this? How will we educate the public about this? And so as soon as this is adopted, and as soon as this is signed by the mayor, we have a team that's ready to start working even as this evening, to start reaching out to certain business owners that maybe are more difficult to reach early in the morning, so that we can get them right now before the weekend, like the Friday, you know, evening starts, and be able to notify them of what this means and what, how it applies to them. And then work through tomorrow to be able to reach everyone else, and make sure that we also post things on our website, have things available, reach out with a letter, et cetera. And then we're, they're already crafting some guidance as far as how we will enforce this, and make sure that we do that in a way that we can be of an educational front, but also be able to fully enforce this as we need to. So we've got some draft plans around that as well. I think lastly, I just want you to know that now that we are in this phase where we do have substantial spread, one of the things that we'll be doing now is really ramping up our surveillance efforts. We're looking at any and all ways that we can identify, where we're starting to see increase in like respiratory symptoms in our community, where we have folks screening out for respiratory symptoms, like say through our EMS system, through the EDs, et cetera, you know, any possible means that we can collect relevant data on a day-by-day basis. Of course, we're monitoring the cases, but that's, that's really the, the easy thing to do when you see that report come up every day. But it's really looking for those discrete indicators that are telling us that our community is starting to be stressed. We're also monitoring the, you know, one of the things you hear about nationally and internationally, quite frankly, is PPE, personal protective equipment, and the critical need for us to be able to make sure that our first responders and our healthcare providers have what they need to protect themselves and be able to do the things that they need to, to provide care for our community. So we're monitoring that. And then, of course, we're working with our healthcare systems to have representatives that met, or presented to you on Tuesday are also here, Dr. Elliott and Dr. Wildey, if you would like to ask them any questions. But of course, then, we're also working, as they are part of our EOC and Unified Command, as well as some of the other staff that are part of our healthcare coalition, really looking at their surge capacity and monitoring that, and making sure that we're keeping a close eye on that. And we've got plans and efforts of how we will manage that surge capacity in helping partner with them if needed, but also, we know they have robust plans that have been in the works and have been, you know, a plan, plans that they've had for quite some time since we've had other pandemics. So those are things. And then, and lastly, I just want to let you know that we continue to closely look at how we manage our continuity of operations for our city employees and make sure that we're doing that work as well. I mentioned a little bit of that the other day, but that is, that is an intense amount of work, to make sure we have the right services available in our community, and that we have the right planning moving forward, and anticipate what the needs are going to be. And so that work continues as well. And lastly, I just want to leave you with this. These are the objectives of our Instant Command and our Emergency Operations Center, just so you have an awareness of that. Maybe I read these the other day, but I can't remember if I did. The first of our general objectives is to limit and slow the number and spread of illness and death in our community. We want to also preserve continuity of community essential services and essential functions. We want to minimize social disruption. Might not feel like that right now, but that absolutely is one of the things we want to minimize. We want to minimize absolutely the economic impact. So, you know, Mayor Tenhaiken has talked often about the social determinants, and how what we're doing now also has an impact on other people's social determinants of health, and we have to be very careful in balancing all of those needs for our community. And lastly, making sure we're coordinating our messaging for the public and keeping them informed. And I'm, I actually have to say, you know, the team is just rocking it, you know, when it comes to communication. I think the, I have heard so many positives out there about how they're staying informed, how the EOC, how Mayor Tenhaiken is keeping everyone informed. But that is going to be a really important thing that we continue to pay attention to moving forward. And so with that, I'll stop talking in my presentation.
Thank you, Jill. Yeah. I'll just say before we turn on to public input, this is why you have a qualified, or why you want a qualified public health director, because Jill has done an incredible job and put a credible amount of time into this. She's not sleeping much, and she is doing a really great job. So Jill, thank you so much for all the hours you've been putting in here. We will move to public input on this topic. So at this time, anyone who would like to speak on this issue can come forward for public input. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I spoke to an officer today that works the 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. shift because we have to reach out to our policemen. Y'all forgot to do that. Our police is down employees. So I asked if this law would be a burden to the police department, how are they going to respond to these calls? Is this a priority one call, high priority, low priority, medium priority call? In this ordinance, how is the police, how are they going to depend on the police department? Are they going to go around and look for these? Are they going to depend on the public to call them on these issues? Is it a discretion of the police to make a physical arrest and book them in a jailhouse, or give them a ticket to go to court? The police department said, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the police department because nobody reached out that I know of, said that they are for this, that she can verify that last week was an average week for them on the police department as far as crime-wise. So I am for this ordinance, at the same time, we don't want to burden the police department either on this. I can stress to y'all how internally that I am very close with these policemen on these streets, on the burden of, of crime here happening in the city, and that they're overwhelmed with little resources out there. So they are for this, but it's going to see how we're going to implement this. So if the police gets called to business, are we going to first give them a written warning? It's up to, is it up to discretion of the officer to give a written warning? Will a citation be issued, or an arrest will be made on the first time or not? That's the question here on that. The police does have discretion when they make arrests on, on tickets, on statutes here. They have the discretion to arrest or not to arrest, or what they feel is appropriate or not appropriate to this matter here. The ones that are not in this ordinance, and do not comply with the executive, executive order from the governor, how will that apply to people? So if they're breaking the law, I mean, can they, can they have 10 people, 11 people in establishments that's not listed in the mayor's recommendations here? I want to emphasize, and I'm, I'm going to speak on the police department's behalf here, because the police department, people got a voucher for the police here. We need to see where are we at in crime? Where are we at? How are we going to deal with this when the, when the people are going to call in nonstop on these calls for service? And how are we going to prioritize these calls for service? Is this a priority one, two, or three call for service? There are some people, the police department has had to prioritize calls and put calls on, on the back burner here, because top priority calls are number one here. How is this going to play out in the court system here? Because in the statute, this is like a petty offense, like massaging without a license is a petty offense. So are we going to bring all these people to court, and then they're going to slot them with a, with a little fine or whatnot, because they have certain guidelines that they have to abide by, the judges on petty offenses here, on a class-two misdemeanor here. This is not a class-one misdemeanor here. We're very fortunate to have teeth in the city to do this. The, the police department said that, that she thinks that they will abide by this if, if they will have teeth in the alcohol licensures, because if their alcohol license is at stake, then they should be complying with, with the rules and the regulations of this. But as all means, we need to figure out a way of how we're going to put this as an ordinance without burden in the police department on this. The police department right now is on Skype interviewing police officers. They are very much on their plate for that. They're negotiating and, and coming to grips with the budget here, too, with upper management. And then, of course, the police department is fighting crime here on the streets. So just take that into consideration, how is this going to pan out altogether here?
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? While she's coming up, we've had extensive conversations with our police department on this, extensive. So I just want to make sure that's on record.
Guys, should really be sanitizing between people up here, guys. I have a massage therapist, Bridget Myers, here in Sioux Falls, and I hate to bring that up, Mayor Tenhaiken, but I am in a medical profession, and really, none of us should be touching any of this without sanitizing between people.
You don't have to touch anything if you don't want.
No, but I'm just saying, we really should have something up here. Because you've had two people up here already that have touched this area. If we're going to take this seriously, we need to take it seriously all the way, even here in this room. I am in support of the ordinance. I've had extensive conversation with some of my counselors. I haven't gotten a hold of my two at large, but this has had significant impact on the personal service industry. I'm one of those people being affected. I just expanded my office. My rent payment's $24.82 this month. I have had, I had five people on my schedule, and I've only had three show this week because of this six-foot clearing that you guys have put out. You've scared everybody off that needs personal services. I have people that medically need my services. I have one gal that cannot walk without my service. Comes in once a week for 90 minutes, Monday, 1:00. When I told her that we may get shut down, it devastated her. She has no idea how she's going to make it two, even four weeks without a session with me. I do a very specific work. I am considered medical massage. You have nothing defined in this ordinance to protect us. Yes, we're considered healthcare, but am I a healthcare facility? It's really not defined in what you have in your ordinance. It's been pretty heated out here in the massage industry. People are attacking, the shaming, the business shaming going on in our community right now is sad. Nobody should be shaming anyone for having to keep their doors open. Somebody may have $30,000 in their account and can close their doors and not have any issues. Some of us just spent all of our savings to expand our business, and was planning on March and April being the chance to replenish that savings. I'm in a situation, I don't qualify for anything, guys. I've tried, I've looked out there. Because I'm a sole proprietor, I have no employees, I don't qualify for all your stimulus packages, or a lot of the things that you are putting out to help people. It is targeted at people who have employees and other businesses. So I want you to take everything into consideration. It's not just certain businesses that are suffering. You've suffered, you've made people suffer just by the wording of how you've stated the social distancing. I mean, can we not go and get haircuts? Can we not go get our nails done? Are we not able to go get massage if it's medically necessary? I mean, what are the definitions here with your six-foot rule? I hope that you are going to keep the 10-people patrons to help these people. I agreed with Counsel Erickson yesterday when she had said that 10 people in a place could mean the difference if someone pays their light bill or not. They're trickling in. I'm hoping to stay afloat. I've got nine days to make my rent payment. So I'm just hoping that you guys can put out some clear definitions, and that it's okay for the public to still do some of their essential business. I don't think taking families to the grocery store is appropriate. I do agree with you on that. Should not be a family outing, but I do think that people should be able to go have a one-on-one service in a sterile environment. We are trained professionals on how to keep things sterile when you come into my office. I'm doing all the CDC guidelines for sanitation, so I don't see any reason why we could not stay open through this. However, I just don't know how we're going to get the public to feel safe because of all the scaring going on out there. I'm also on the Kingswood Rummage Committee. I am a board member on there. We're concerned, do we postpone? Do we still have it? I've reached out to the leaders, the leaders' rummages, they are the weekend before us. Do we postpone? Is it something we could feel safe to have? It is outdoors. Do we limit less than 10 people in a garage? What are you guys' direction there? I mean, we're open. We can't make any decisions until we get some direction from our city leaders. So we're open to hearing what you guys have. Other than that, I just, please do not close businesses. It is really important to keep our economy going. I really support keeping them open, even if it is trickling them in to pay our bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this this afternoon? All right, seen none. We're going to move into discussion. Why don't we first get a motion on the floor, and then we'll move into that?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a motion approved by Erickson and seconded by Selberg. Counsel Erickson.
I have an amendment that was suggested by the attorney's office that I, is cleanup language, so I'll make a motion to amend by striking section three, paragraph one A, III, quote, "that are subject to requirements of paragraph five of these regulations," end quote, and inserting in its place, quote, "that are designed and intended, intended for seated onsite consumption," end quote.
Second for that?
Second.
Second by Neitzer. Stacy, you just want to say what that is.
Sure, yeah. What that is, it's just an amendment that clarifies, rather than a reference to paragraph five of these regulations, it just substitutes for, in effect, you have businesses such as grocery stores and markets that are exempt, meaning that they are allowed to be open, but also that there can be portions of those businesses that also qualify as dine-in eating areas. And so this amendment just extends to those same eating areas, the same regulations And so this amendment just extends to those same eating areas, the same regulations and requirements as regular restaurants and bars and all the other similar establishments referenced above.
Got it. All right, on that amendment, is there discussion on that amendment? Discussion on the phone? All right, let's take a-
On here.
All right, let's take a vote on this, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson? Yes.
All right, the amendment passes eight to zero, so we're back to the amended, motion as amended. We'll move into any discussion then that counselors may have. Counsel Knightsert, I'll start with you.
First question goes to what, and this is for the, I think the, the health director probably would be best, goes to the questions that Bridget was asking about personal services. I, I talked to her yesterday and I also talked to a few hairdressers and, and I will tell you that they're, they're just getting demolished right now as, as everybody. Their bookings have dropped to almost nothing and it seems like one of the, I think one of the main issues and, and she talked about it was, could you clarify the guidance as to the one-on-one interactions? Because there's, you know, is it, do we want everybody to stay home period, end of issue? Or if one person goes and has a one-on-one interaction to get a haircut, is that okay if they keep it below the 10? What are we, what are we telling people? Because there's a lot of people that are really not sure. And there is kind of this balance of some people that are saying, you know, you shouldn't be going out at all and there's some interpersonal interactions. There's, so what would you say to people to that question?
Well, first off, yes, there are a number of types of businesses that aren't necessarily regarded one way or the other in this particular ordinance. Those that are mentioned specifically that would be restricted to the 10 or less patron requirement are listed and they don't list salons and massage therapy businesses. I, this is where, this is where the whole section that is around the general public needs to be taken into consideration and people need to seriously regard their interactions with everyone. It's decisions they have to make. If somebody has a very good confidence that they're, whoever they're seeking their services from is healthy and, and they don't have any concerns, we're not going to tell them they shouldn't have a massage or go to their hairdresser. That's not regulated anywhere. But the guidance would say you should be following the six foot rule to protect yourself and protect others. And the reason is, is because there are so many instances of where people do not display symptoms of coronavirus, but are able to shed that virus. And so that's the problem that we have, right? And so the reason that they encourage everyone to socially, we encourage and ask that everyone socially distance themselves at this time. And these are not easy things to go through. Not everybody's going to be able to get a hand, you know, a step-by-step instruction of what they have to do, but it's everyone's responsibility, whether you're a business owner and have to make decisions about how you're going to conduct your business, or it's someone who's seeking those business services in, in what, how you're going to maintain your own health and the health of that person and ultimately the health of the community.
Okay, and, and thank you. And so it is the six foot distance that I think, so everybody has a personal responsibility. They're going to have to make that judgment call and decide whether they think that interaction is, let's say, worth the risk. So, okay, I, and this is not your fault, but I will just say, just realizing in the, in the, the way in which, you know, the paradigm that we're in, considering that, I could see anybody in a personal service industry where by its very nature you have close interaction is really going to struggle for a while because I, this six foot thing could be in for, in for quite a while. So everybody's going to be making, and I'm not, again, this is not blaming you or, or anybody else, but it's just a fact. I, I really feel for them because it's going to be, it's going to be tough on them.
Counselor Knightsert, may, may I answer part of that question as well?
Please, please.
Just because I think the, the clarity is important and the question is well put. If you, when you look at the ordinance, okay, and when you look at the private business section, and this is why the definitions are at the top, and I understand how people can struggle with this a little bit, just because there's a lot of legalese in this or it's just, it's, it's a law, right? And law is making sausage. But when you look at section one in the, in the definition section, that second paragraph, enclosed retail businesses that promotes public gathering, okay? That's your bars, your restaurants, those types of things. It's not directed at personal services like massage or salons or barbers, okay? So when you go through further into this and you look at those restrictions, right? It exempts from those areas, just for the purposes of clarity, when you look at the lists of, in section three, 1A, and I get I'm talking like a lawyer, but that's just kind of the way it is right now, and it lists all those, that the restrictions in section three, paragraph one, right, do not apply to all those businesses listed in sub-paragraph A, your healthcare facilities, childcare. So that says, hey, that's a recognition that when you're limiting the 10 people thing, that can't apply to childcare facilities, right? You're still encouraged to socially distance and that sort of thing. So that's, those are exceptions to ensure that there's no confusion within the community as to what an enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering means, right? So then when you, when you continue into the ordinance and you find this section that says in paragraph four, "all other employers, both for-profit and nonprofit, within the city of Sioux Falls are urged and encouraged to," and then that's a section encouraging things like social distancing, okay? And when you look at the language in sub-paragraph A, it says, "implement procedures to ensure social distancing between persons as is feasible," right? So it's not feasible to get a haircut from six feet away or a massage, right? And so this allows for those types of businesses to continue. And that's consistent with what the mayor has said as he's, he's put out this information and say, none, no businesses are getting shut down. There are certain limitations consistent with CDC executive order and that type of thing. So I just want to be clear because I understand the sensitivity there, the mayor does, the council does, and so that's why you can get lost in the language a little bit, but it's important to understand that those things remain and continue.
And, and I'll, and thank you. I will finish with this and I will defer. So I, I, I very much thank you for making that clear and, and it's very clear that businesses like Bridget's don't have to shut down and we're not doing that. I, I'm just trying to recognize for the public that, again, with this six foot recommendation from the CDC, they're all but practically being shut down because people are in fear of going to them. So I'm going to beg people, buy all the personal services, you know, I won't say one name, but buy gift cards, do whatever you can to get them some revenue right now because people are not going to them right now and we need to help them survive. And that goes to all businesses, but especially those personal services. So I'll just get off my soapbox.
Counsel Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could maybe tie into that a little bit. I actually went and got my haircut the other day and the lady who cuts my hair owns the salon and there was definitely some concern, but she says basically for the last week or two, business has been pretty busy for the fact that I think everybody was a little bit concerned they might be shut down. So I think there's going to be a lot of people happy about what's going on today and of course, there'll be plenty that aren't. That's the way it goes, but I appreciate the action being taken. Mine is more of a statement than any questions today. I believe we can always increase restrictions. We can always turn the screws a little tighter if we have to and the way things are happening at a moment's notice around here, that may happen anytime soon. We don't know that, but once we go that step of shutting everything down, there's no turning back. And I kind of keep throwing this out in my head where if I go, I don't think, I'll bet there's 100 businesses, just to put a roundabout number out there, that if we closed everything down, they're not going to make it a few weeks. And if we close everything down, we're not going to be turning things back around in a few weeks. So let's say you got 100 businesses. Let's say in a real, being cautious kind of number, they all have 10 people that work for them. You're looking at 1,000 people out of work. So there's 1,000 families affected. Let's spend that off into how can that mean for health and finances? And then you take that, is that worse or better than being prepared for a virus? I mean, there is no easy answer to any of this, but I still think that this is a good step being taken for now and I know that everybody's being extremely vigilant and overseeing this daily. Director Frank and I would reiterate what the mayor said. I think you and your staff are amazing. Our city's lucky to have your talent in your department, what you're bringing to this right now. I don't think anybody has any idea the hours that are being put in by folks on this stuff and just the constant turmoil because you have a decision right now none of us have ever faced and there's no real great answer. So in general, I'm just, I think that tying in from what Counsel Knightsert said and experiencing this myself with somebody I know personally that owns a business and I'll bet they're breathing a sigh of relief to go, well, for now, we've got some, some time to keep the lights on and hopefully things get figured out in the meantime and numbers don't escalate and, and I'm quite sure we'll keep an eye on it next week. Who knows? But for today, I think it's a good move. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the phones and see if any of the three counselors on the phone.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Kylie?
Go ahead.
And this is, both of these are maybe directed more toward City Attorney Eoistra. It's my understanding that it's determined that we can't do anything stricter than what we are doing today. We, we maybe can hope that that may change if merited. I state that because before you answer Attorney Eoistra, my email and contact, it's been nine, or it's been nine to one, basically, people wondering why aren't we doing more versus we don't want to see this happen. It's, it's nine to one or maybe even, even greater. So can you, can you speak to that just very briefly?
I don't know that I can speak to that briefly, Counsel Kylie. You know, I am a lawyer, but I, I will tell you that when, when that issue comes up, okay, when people are asking about, are you doing everything you can? And you have people who want to see everything shut down, right? And you want to see people, and you have people who do not want to see things shut down. And the way that I've explained that is, is the tension. And by tension, I don't mean stress between people. I mean the tension, the pull between liberty, First Amendment, and safety, public health, right? And that's a balance that's going on right now and it's going on in different jurisdictions and different venues across the country and within our state. And so when you look at the existing law under city ordinance that says that there's a certain element of police power that a city government has, and then there's the creation of a Board of Health established under chapter 3422, the contagious disease chapter of South Dakota law, right? And then you have the South Dakota Constitution, the First Amendment right to assembly. And you combine all of those things and say, okay, at what, where, where does that authority rest? Is it at the state level or is it at the city level? Well, obviously there can be different schools of thought on that, but one of the things that you're going to find is that, that certain things are reserved to the state and certain things are reserved to the municipality. And the overarching theme with that is a potential for liability if somebody believes that it's not right, that, that a city or a state or the federal government didn't get it right and the, and the remedy for that is the courts. And so that the way that the, the balance with this recommendation to the Board of Health, it considers what city ordinance allows the Board of Health to create for a regulation. It balances what is 34-48A of state law when there's a declaration of emergency? What powers does that create, right? And you look at chapter 34-22, which is the contagious diseases chapter, what, what powers does that create? And under the status of the law that we have right now in the state, this is, this is our position as to what the city can do. And so that's what's being proposed. That's what the Board of Health considered and you balance that with the health systems and all the recommendations on the public safety side versus those that come from the, from the, the business side or the right to assemble side. And so it's not without its challenges, as the mayor has pointed out, when these decisions are made from a leadership point of view, that you have to take that public input, but you also have to make decisions based on the law. And that's why the recommend, was, recommendation was made the way it was and is, and that's what's being presented to the council today.
Thank you for that brief explanation. I, I do have another, you know, unfortunately, viruses are not mobile in, in themselves. They, it takes some, somebody or something to move them. You know, they can be propelled by a cough or a sneeze, so that's why it's so important to exercise proper hygiene. An individual who, for instance, coughs in their hand or, or sneezes in their hand, it can then be moved anywhere by just touching a doorknob or a pen at a desk that then is used by somebody else. So I mean, we can't control, it's, it's, it's the movement of people that moves viruses from place to place, from person to person. And so for that reason, I, I do support this latest ordinance. My last question is, how did we determine a violation of this ordinance would be a class two misdemeanor? And as I understand, that includes a $500 fine and possibly up to 30 days incarceration.
Yeah, that's a good question. When you look at that section of the, the city ordinance, the proposed ordinance, which is, falls under the citizens of Sioux Falls, section four, paragraph three, what it references is section 10.999 of city ordinance, okay? And that city ordinance is the one that creates the general penalty that, that the city is allowed to impose for violations of any of its criminal laws. So that's why you see that reference within the ordinance and what that can do is a couple things, is you pointed out the maximum penalties for a class two misdemeanor violation. And what this ordinance provides deliberately is that, that, that citation can be issued to the owner of a business, a business entity itself, or the supervising manager. And the reason that it's written that way is because that can impact a business's eligibility when it comes to licensing, for business licensing, liquor licensing. That is, that's a creature of state law. So the city doesn't control that. They do review those on an annual basis, but when you look at the penalty, so you've got those maximum penalties, but there also can be impacts beyond that and ones that in the event that this isn't minded by those businesses that are defined above the enclosed retail component of that, they have to be aware that it's not just a, a fine or potential imprisonment because obviously you don't imprison a business entity, but there are other potential ramifications to that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. That's it for me for now.
The other thing, sorry, the other thing I would point out is that the last sentence, which is, is straight out of city ordinance, states that, that any continuing violation of this, in the event that a business says, you know what, I, I can afford $500 a day in the event that I'm going to continue in, in business that, in, in, obviously these penalties don't always result in a maximum penalty, but just for sake of a hypothetical, that each day can be a distinct violation or a separate violation, which is something obviously we all hope to avoid, but in the event that somebody is disregarding the safety component of that tension between freedom and safety, that, that's an ongoing remedy that the city would have under this ordinance.
Counsel Staley.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I've got, I've got three comments I want to make. I, I want the public to understand that within this timeframe, this body of city council members has worked together with the greatest respect and collaboration and communication. And I think we are all sensitive to what's happening out in this community, along with the mayor. We have different people we interact with and we hear from. That's what makes this council so effective. And so I'm just grateful that we've been able to work together and listen to each other and, and hear, hear both sides or five sides of, of an issue. I'm also grateful to our mayor and to our Jill Frank and our public health director for the timely updates that we're getting because what I'm hearing from people, they want information. They want to be informed. And so these press conferences that you're having and, and even like the meeting we had on Tuesday where we had some of our health officials from the hospitals in, I think people appreciate that because part of the fear factor is the unknown and, and there are many unknowns that we're dealing with. And, and the third thing I, I am so appreciative is, is our two doctors, the, the medical officers from our two hospitals who are willing to- from our, um, two hospitals who were willing to come Tuesday. They're here again today. And I have a question, if you would come forward to, I've got two questions for you. And, and I invite you to continue to come back because it's like fresh water coming in to get your perspective. So, the first thing, and of course, this is kind of an informational session along with talking about this ordinance, but it all helps us to make that best decision. So, would you tell the public about your, your call for, um, and I, I've heard that there's a, a call for retired nurses and doctors to come forth to help? Is, is that something that you can comment on?
Uh, so, yeah, Mike Wildy, Medical Officer at Sanford. Uh, we have not made a call for retired doctors or nurses. I know, I'm aware of that happening just from watching the news. Um, we certainly would have a process for doing that if the need would arise.
Okay, so you're not, and Avera, are you currently looking at that to help to bulk up our resources?
We certainly are open to any and all, um, options. Um, at this point in time, we've not reached out to retired physicians and nurses. There's some licensing and credentialing factors that need to be considered with that, uh, but that is not to say that we're turning a blind eye to that. Uh, we're, we're keeping all of our options open at this point.
And, and moving forward, it's, we are going to be looking to you as you're, you're being upfront with the public as to what you're seeing, to give us guidance as to how severe this is. Because we're having a debate right now about this six-foot rule. And for you to, if you come in and say, you know, that's really overreacting, you know, we're gonna listen to you as well as, as all the other experts that we have involved. And the, the second thing I wanted to ask you is that, and I was talking to some people about this today, because we've had the reports of like 48 confirmed cases. By the time we actually have those people, those cases reported, I'm thinking that's, they're pretty sick. So, so the, the numbers that we're seeing, when these people come in to be tested that way, they, they're not just like me having a cough and wanting to come in and get tested. Or we're talking as somewhat a person who's ill.
So far, the, uh, the severity of illness with the positive tests have been across the gamut of severity. Uh, as we are facing a limitation in the number of tests that we can run, we are prioritizing, uh, hospitalized sick patients, um, or, or people who are at increased risk for severe complications of this illness. So, to some extent, you're right, uh, the positives may, by selection bias, more reflect a, a more severe end of the spectrum. But we have also had positives in folks that are mildly symptomatic at this point.
Because what, what we're hearing is if you're mildly, mildly symptomatic, you really should just stay home.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then I've got a question, perhaps this is for the city attorney. Um, but one thing that's coming to my mind that we're, we're going to be passing an ordinance that's going to have a misdemeanor fine of $500 or 30 days in jail for a business that's listed that is having more than 10 patrons, well, I guess we'll say nine or less patrons coming in to their facility. What, uh, what safety, are, how are we ensuring the safety of the workers, the staff members in that facility? So, let's say you have three staff members and they're being forced to be in close proximity to each other. Are, and to my understanding here, that this ordinance is not gonna have any kind of a bite to the owner of the facility as to how he's handling his employees. So, so we're giving a safety precaution to the patrons, but there's nothing in place with the same legal mandate for the employees. Am I hearing that right?
You know, the, the safety mandate, a couple things. Let me, let me touch on the first part of your question there when you said nine or fewer. Just, just to be sure people understand, um, the, the language of this allows for 10 or fewer, okay? It's not more than 10 in those, in those particular retail establishments that we discussed. Uh, just something I wanted to put out there. Secondly, when it comes to the responsibility of an employer, uh, that actually applies across the board regardless of whether it's a retail establishment or, or anyone. Now, that, the misdemeanor component of that applies to, uh, the, the, uh, the entities that are referenced in here, but the expectation of any employer is that they follow those CDC guidelines and all of those things. But the government is not coming in when we talk about liberty and safety, that that safety requirement on employers is one that's embedded in here and at local, state, and federal levels for conducting hygiene, social distancing, all of those things.
And, and within that facility, so if you have 10 people in a facility, in, in a business, they could be as close together as they want to be.
Well, I mean.
We're not, there's no legal mandate right now to keeping people six apart.
Well, when, when you say legal mandate, there isn't a criminal consequence to someone not social distancing anymore than any of us within this room walking by somewhat, you know? There isn't that type of government intrusion into these employers and their businesses. Again, whether it's, whether it's 10 or if it's an existing call center that has several hundred employees, you know, that, that limitation isn't there, but the social distancing expectations and to a certain extent, requirements from the CDC, the White House, from the governor's executive order to this, uh, are that there's that expectation and that encouragement, but there isn't anyone who's coming in to cite any employer that allows two employees to cross paths in a hallway, for example.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to the phones. Counselor Sale or Breckie, do you have any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, this is Kirk.
I'll start with Counselor Breckie.
Thank you. A couple of questions for the doctors.
Go ahead.
The, the question, the first question that I have is, I'm trying to wrap my arms around where we are on the curve at this juncture and what, you know, as best you can, what is your expectation when you apply the multipliers to the number of cases that we currently have? You know, how rapidly do you see us climbing up this bell curve that we're trying to flatten out?
Uh, so the information we have right now on the curve, we are, um, we are climbing, obviously, by the number of cases and then what we're seeing in the hospital as well. Um, what do we anticipate looking at the multipliers? Trying to give you a very concise answer, we, we don't have a model for the upper Midwest. Uh, we don't have a model for the distance, uh, people in this area live apart, their habits, their norms, you know? We don't, take Italy, for instance, I've never been, I've had family live there, you know, they're, they're a more physical society, if you will, a lot of, you know, close contact. I, I don't think we're like that so much, so could we be a little different perhaps? Um, the anticipation based on the modeling we have, which I'd argue is not the greatest numbers, but, uh, best we have is that we will, uh, surge, uh, we will, uh, peak at some point and we will descend. And, uh, it's really a matter of how fast that goes up and down. The hope is for a nice, flat curve like we've talked about over and over again. Right now, we are trending up, but it is a slow trend and, and pray to God that continues.
Yeah, very well said, Dr. Wildy. I'll only add, I think we're early in this. This, this is not the time to relax in our vigilance. This is a time to, and this, this is hard, right? But, but this is a time to stay vigilant, uh, don't lose faith, keep doing what we're doing. There, there's little we as a population can do to slow the spread of a virus, but what we can do, we need to keep doing.
Thank you. And then just one further question. I know, you know, as, you know, as we continue to progress, um, I guess one of my concerns is, you know, and I, and I realize you probably can't answer this question, but, you know, as it progresses and it, and it begins to start progressing rapidly, you know, it would seem, again, that we need to be on top of it, both as the policy setters and you as the medical industry. And so, one of my concerns, I will just open it up right now because it's going to be discussed in, in a few moments on the council level, is, you know, the need, you know, to meet and, and get information from, you know, the EOC, from you doctors, you know, as we proceed through this. Um, do you have any recommendations or thoughts on how frequently, you know, we should be meeting, you know, to update these various standards that we're looking at in this ordinance?
Uh, so we're, uh, meeting, and I know Avera's, uh, the same, we meet together, uh, every morning in the city EOC with the, uh, city leadership. And that's been a, um, very, uh, professional, educational session, back and forth, uh, really a, a wonderfully engaged team to work with. We as a health system, I know Avera's a health system, and Dr. Elliott can speak to that, are meeting literally around the clock, seven days a week, monitoring, uh, the system. I'm working on the front lines, I will be this weekend as well, but also, uh, we're walking around the hospital, et cetera. And so, it's just, we're trying to gather as much information as you can and, and trying to be as transparent with that information as, as allowed by federal law. And, and we certainly have leeway to communicate with the, uh, EOC, uh, on a daily basis.
Yeah, certainly, uh, from a health system perspective, we are meeting constantly. Uh, how, how often that information gets reported to the public, I, I think I'll defer to, uh, more knowledgeable folks on the council to say what's, what's the right venue and the frequency.
Counselor Sale.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, a, a quick statement, I do appreciate the daily briefings that the council has been getting by email from the mayor. I think that's very appropriate for us to have the right information on a daily basis as the doctors have just stated that they meet with the city staff and leadership, uh, every day also. So, thank you very much for getting that to us. This question is for Jill Franken. At what point in the curve do you think it would be necessary for us to take further action?
That is a really good question, Counselor. We know that right now, if we're, as we're starting to see increased cases, I think it depends on how high that surge takes us. Certainly, before we peak, if we're seeing cases, it's really a lot right now is gonna depend on the stress to the healthcare systems. And, um, so they're gonna be the ones really guiding us now and helping us to understand where their stressors are, where their needs are, where we need to take additional community mitigation action. You know, I think this two-week time period where we've set this policy in place is a really good, um, start for us. And, um, I, I think within a week, we're gonna see a lot more about where we're gonna be heading as a community. I know you all have a special meeting, I think, next Tuesday, is that correct? And certainly, that gives us a few days now over the weekend to really see where this is going and where these cases end up, uh, taking us. But I would say, you know, we're gonna, that's why it's so important for us to have our healthcare partners, um, in the unified command and in the EOC, because they're the ones that now we're gonna be looking at a lot of discreet information about the community and what we're seeing as far as stressors, but most importantly, it's gonna be what the healthcare systems are telling us. And so, I, you know, I think, really, I wish I, well, I'm glad I can say that I haven't been through this before so that I could tell you, you know, how this will exactly go, but I feel like we are taking the right approach right now.
Thank you.
Other counselors? Counselor Starr.
Mr. Mayor, I would, uh, move to amend on page four, Section 2, where it says April 8th, 2020, and replace, or strike that April 8th and replace it with April 2nd.
Second, Breckie.
Too late, Counselors. Counselor Staley got it. Uh, that's a motion by Starr, seconded by Staley, uh, to move, um, from April 8th to April 2nd. Counselor Starr, you wanna have the floor on that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I do start my remarks with the, that I'm proud of the community that we live in. I'm excited, or I'm, I'm impressed with the way we've handled this situation. We've had a lot of, uh, lot of long, uh, hours for our, all of us, and this seems to fall back in the council's lap. And the purpose of my amendment is, this is changing daily, if not hourly, we get new information all the time. And to throw a date out, two weeks out, for me, is, is too long before we have an opportunity to review this. One of the things that I want to do with this amendment is balance the concerns of the council. I've spoke to members of the council who think we're doing too much or we're trying to be limited in what we do. And then we have other council members, and I fall into this category, that I don't think we're doing enough. I think we need to be more creative and find a different way. What I'm, what I'm suggesting with this amendment is that Director Franklin did point out, we have a special meeting or, uh, scheduled for Tuesday and that we have an informational meeting and get updated and to see where we're at. And if we have to, um, on Thursday, which would be the second, we could meet again really quickly to either extend, amend, or terminate the ordinance, which is exactly what it says in the ordinance. But waiting 14 days, I know it's not easy to be predictable in the situation that we're in, but I think that we can give our residents a little bit of predictability that, yes, the council is going to address this on Tuesday, we're gonna be updated in public on the, the local, uh, channel, our Channel 16. And then we have the ability, again, to extend, amend, or terminate within seven days. That, I hope, would make the people who are happy that think we're going too far to take a look at it. And then those of us that think we're not doing enough also have that ability on Thursday to, uh, to extend or amend, um, this ordinance. It, it's, it's difficult to know what to do, but to say we're gonna wait 14 days to, to review is just way too long for me to feel comfortable not taking an action and not having this body who now has the responsibility to make this decision, um, to move forward. I also, it does also give us the flexibility of something just really goes, um, the curve spikes really hard over the weekend. We can obviously meet again on Monday, we can meet on Tuesday, we don't have to wait till Thursday. But again, trying to add some predictability to what we're doing. The other thing is, is I want to make sure that we're sending the message to the community that the likelihood of us extending is a lot greater than, um, terminating this ordinance in seven days. And I don't want to send any message that, um, that we're gonna do that, because that is not what we're seeing. That's not what the healthcare professionals told us today, both at the Board of Health as well as before us today. So, I would urge your support and at least, uh, take, to consider that, uh, we only go seven days rather than 14.
Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on that amendment? Counselor Breckie?
Thank you. And I just wanted to, you know, um, offer my support to the amendment. I did work very closely and very diligently with Councilmember Starr on this amendment today. I, I really wish I could have reached everyone and including you, Mayor. I was trying to reach you, I was trying to reach the city attorney. We did have minimal contact with, uh, the Public Health Department, trying to get the doctors here. Um, and I did try to reach all the council members, but, you know, between two and four, that was pretty hard to do, um, knowing exactly what the Health Board had passed at that point. So, I just want everybody to know that, you know, I was trying to reach everyone. I, I do really support this, and here is why. Um, and I, and I like, um, Councilmember Starr's term predictability. I use a, a different term. You know, we've talked about taking measured steps, but even, you know, um, Director, um, the, our Health Director just told us, you know, we're, the likelihood of us meeting, you know, one or more times in the next week, it's just probably gonna happen. So, I do really think in this measured process, to have a couple of what I call drop boxes in place where we have a legitimate meeting scheduled, we have the ability, um, you know, to, you know, to just, you know, review and stay as we are or, or, or take some other measures, it allows the public kinda to, to know that we're gonna be meeting at that time and to, to, well, what I talked about earlier on, come along with us, allows the public to come along with us. It allows us to have the doctors and the Health Director present and, and helping us, you know, as we take these measured steps and try to, you know, juggle that balance that we're trying to do that gives the businesses the ability to operate as long as they can. But I think we all know when we reach that surge, there is going to be a, probably a point where we're going to need to shut down completely for a while. And I would just feel much more comfortable feel much more comfortable, and I hope everybody understands, that's just the purpose of this, much more comfortable with this, this predictable meeting schedule, that being, you know, a briefing as part of the Tuesday special meeting, adding that, and then having the Thursday meeting scheduled with the agenda item being, you know, to, you know, to, you know, to review, propose, extend or amend, or turni- terminate, you know, the ordinance, that just allows us the flexibility to continue to discuss it, have the open dialogue with the public and, and the feedback, and then make any adjustments that we need to in place, and that doesn't stop anybody, either the council or the mayor, from calling an emergent, calling a different emergency meeting in between times if that was so necessary. So that would be my plea to the council to do this, um, I think it's just a, a kind of responsible way to move forward, and it, and it does, I think, bring the public along with us. So I encourage everyone to vote for it, and I do consider it a friendly amendment, and I did, really did try to get to everyone, it just was impossible based on the time streams.
Counselor Neitzert.
There's no right or wrong answer to this, there's good points on both sides, because any, any date we pick is somewhat arbitrary. I, I guess, when I'm thinking about it, a few things are coming to my mind. The first is, if we need the doctors here, then we definitely should have them here, but I would be really cautious about asking them to come, just on some scheduled basis. The, my understa- I think they're working double shift, seven days a week, they're trying to run two healthcare systems. So I would just, I, I don't want to just have them come here just because we want them here in case we have a question. They are communicating, they're at our EOC communicating every day, and that information is being, being brought out at a press conference. This, this administration is, is literally reporting to the public and to us in real time. So I would just be really, really cautious about that, because I think there's very important work they have to do. That's the first thing. The, the other thing that I guess I struggle with is, we can call a meeting at any point with 24 hours' notice, and if you want to talk about predictability, my only concern, I suppose, not my only, but a big concern is, if it's every seven days, if we just say we're going to meet every seven days, literally every three or four days, the public and, and businesses are going to be wondering, okay, is things going to change on me again? It, if you want predictability, having a little bit more of a gap, we can always call another meeting. So I guess, I, those are my two cautions, that's why I'm, I'm leaning against this amendment.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, I appreciate, uh, Counselor Brecky did reach out to me with this earlier this afternoon, and that is always appreciated, to kind of have the steps laid out ahead of time and know what they're thinking, and Counselor Starr did a nice job of saying his point of view on that this afternoon as well, and it got me thinking about kind of where we're at at this point. So, um, I guess my hesitations on it are a few. Right now, again, I, I, we have daily EOC meetings, we have daily press conferences, I'm certainly not seeing any signs of anything slipping through the cracks, and everybody's pretty well stretched, and I'm seeing them constantly when I turn on the television. You know, as Dr. Wilde had said, you know, they're working around the clock, seven days a week, and being as transparent and reporting to us as possible in the community. Dr. Franklin stated they're ramping up their monitoring, and as has been stated here, I think, six or seven times today, they're rocking it, especially on the communication. We have daily briefings from the mayor. We are meeting next Tuesday, uh, the likelihood of us meeting before then, I wouldn't be surprised, the way things are going. So I mean, I, I guess if I was worried about that, we're not getting information, and we're not, who knows when we'll meet again, I'd be more apt to go along with this. The way I see it now, I think we're going to be, on the average, getting together about three times a week and seeing stats and press conferences every day for the next three months. I don't think we're going to miss anything and have plenty of time and opportunities to talk. And again, if things get to the point where it's time for the next step, the mayor has, at his pleasure, anytime, can call a meeting, and I'm quite sure he will if it's needed. So that's where I follow up, but I do appreciate the sentiment, and thank you for reaching out.
Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, and I do, uh, appreciate the fact that Counselor Brecky reached out to me, uh, this morning, uh, and then, uh, I gave it, uh, consideration at that time during our discussion initially. Uh, I thought that this was something that I could support, and then as I, I had more time to process this, and as I was watching the Board of Health meeting, um, you know, I had some second thoughts with, so I called Counselor Brecky back and, uh, expressed some of those thoughts with her. Uh, so I do understand that the members that are supportive of this amendment, you know, really have the same concerns we do, and that is, that this is likely going to escalate before it gets better. I understand that, and I greatly appreciate it. But, uh, when, uh, after having time to consider it, I, I don't support shortening the period from two weeks to one week. Doing so creates the impression, or could create the impression, this could be over in a week. And I know that Counselor Starr had stated, you know, just, just the opposite, that he understands that, and that this council isn't conveying that, but however, shortening this to one week could lead to some of the confusion that, uh, Counselor Neitzert referred to, especially with the businesses. Um, you know, it may convey, uh, this serious issue is not that bad after all, instead of delivering the message, uh, you know, the supporters of the amendment actually intend. Uh, it, it's a little bit like stating that, want to have everything up and running by Easter. You know, while I appreciate the optimism behind that statement, uh, it, it's unfortunately going to convey that things are going to get better before they are, and, and I'm very concerned that people won't take this issue as seriously as they need. If, if anything, in my opinion, uh, the period, uh, of this ordinance, uh, that this ordinance is effective should possibly be doubled, not cut in half. And I, the administration has demonstrated they are acting, uh, proactively, and if we just take a look at the ordinance, it's, uh, uh, March 12th is when the mayor issued the initial executive order number 218. What's not listed is then on March 17th, the city council passed ordinance 2620, um, and that's where we reduced the gathering in city buildings, properties, from 250 to 50, and so that was just five days after the initial executive order. And then, uh, now another nine days later, today, March 26th, we're dealing with, uh, this particular ordinance, uh, or actually, March 26th, uh, yeah, we're reducing it down to, to below 10. So I think this demonstrates that the, uh, administration has, they have acted appropriately and proactively throughout this very fluid environment, and I guess I have every expectation that they will. And as I pointed out to Counselor Brecky during our discussion, this, this council could call an emergency meeting as well, we don't have to rely on the administration, we just need to have six members of the council sign on it, and we can call up the meeting ourselves, or emergency meeting ourselves. Um, informational, to get, to get additional information, informational, uh, adding informational, uh, is always possible. Um, and as many of my colleagues have already stated, we've been getting daily updates, and everybody is very appreciative of that, and, and we can even request additional updates and informational, uh, if necessary. Uh, I appreciate, once again, I appreciate the intent of the proposed amendment, I think we're really on the same page, that this is likely to, this situation is likely to get worse before it's going to get better, but, uh, because of the reasons I just stated, um, and despite the good intentions of the individuals proposing this amendment, uh, I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any more discussion on this amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Staley first, and then Counselor Brecky.
Let Counselor Brecky go first.
Okay, Counselor Brecky?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to my fellow council members. Uh, really what I'm trying to do here is, I guess, ingratiator, ingrate, in, in, integrate the council into the process by, by being progressive and setting some meetings so that we can properly educate ourselves before we make the ultimate decisions. Because in this process, and it is a life and death process, and the decisions that we make in the coming days are going to affect lives and whether people get to live or not. And for, I need two things for that, for me, and I, and I would hope that my fellow council members agree. One, I need information, and, and this is different information that we need when we're making these final decisions than, than all the, the extra information that we're getting for different purposes, the, the briefings and, and, and all of those things are different. Then when it gets down to the final decision, yes, I want the doctors there when I'm making the final decision on these very critical issues, and yes, I want information specifically designed for my needs as a council member to make this very serious life and death, death decision. And that's why I'm just trying to put in place a process that activates us as a council, and put something in place that we know, number one, we're going to get briefed, and number two, you know, we're going to have a discussion on this day to see where we're at and, and, and move forward, you know, either making things stay the same or changing things, but it allow, it allows fluid, fluidity, and it allows predictability, and I just think it's a really good idea for us on a go-forward basis. So I would, I would, I hope if anything I said in there rings true to you, uh, that you will change your mind and vote for it.
Counselor Staley.
In our community, right now, we've shut our schools down, we've shut down, we're not having church services anymore, we're not going into our county and city buildings, everything's come to a halt. I teach piano, my colleagues are saying, kids don't want to come to, they're not coming to our homes for, for lessons anymore, everything's stopped. And I'm, I'm hearing an energy from the public that is saying, we need to shut everything down. I talked to a business, a guy who owns a big business in town today, he said, Teresa, I think we should just shut everything down for three weeks, just, it's the shelter-in-place thing, go for it, and, and just let this thing just die out. We're, this, we're not going there right now. To me, this is a compromise, this is reasonable, because we don't know, none of us know. I mean, we were in here two weeks ago, the dialogue has been changing all the time, it was 250 people, then it was 10, 10 people. Um, so it's changing, to me, this makes perfect sense, that we're going to be, say, as a body, that we're going to come back and revisit this, to tell the public, we're going to try it for a week, let's listen to our health experts, and by the way, I appreciate you guys being here, and I think you do need to be here, and if you, if you come for a brief amount of time and you leave, that's great, maybe you don't need to be here right now, but I appreciate you coming in and answering our questions, okay? So versus, I can call you on the phone, I suppose, but then the public doesn't hear the information, so I think it is absolutely imperative to have you here. This is a serious, a serious situation. So I, when, when Counselor Brecky brought this up, I thought, you know, this makes sense, that we're, we're, we're being, uh, commissioned to, to pass this thing, it's, everything's coming on the council, we're the final authority here. So we have the ability within this group to say, we're doing this now, and we want to listen for a week, and then we want it, we want to make sure this is a path we want to continue on, let's give it a week, things are changing. So I, I think this, this is a, I appreciate Counselor Brecky for doing this, and Counselor Starr, thank you.
All right, see, no further discussion, or hearing none from the phone, what we're going to do is, uh, call for a vote on this amendment, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
No.
Neitzert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
All right, the amendment fails five to three, so we're back to the, uh, main motion as amended. Further discussion on that, counsel? Counselor Erickson.
I just want to make a brief statement of saying thank you for all the hours that everyone has put into it. I know, uh, we as a council meet here when we get called for special meetings, which is a, a teeny, tiny portion of the amount of work that goes in from the administration to the attorney's office, to health, to every single partner across the counties, private business, everything. And, and Jill, when I know, Director Franklin, I'm sorry, when I know you come up and speak, and you speak at these press conferences, as well as speaking at the podium, and Mayor, when you speak, I trust what you're saying. I know that you're talking to these two guys here, as well as they're going back to their hospital systems, the collaboration has to happen for us to be safe and healthy in this community. And so I want you to know, when you come up and talk to us and talk on these press conferences, we're listening, and I, I want the public to also have that trust and listen, um, because there's constant information. The information is rolling out every single day, I get a notification on my cell phone that says, the city of Sioux Falls is live, the governor of South Dakota is live, and, you know, I try to share those as well as everyone else, because that's where we have the, the information at our fingertips. The emails that continue to come, um, from your office, Mayor, which clearly goes across all different departments, is extremely helpful for me to sit here and then make a educated decision with what is being asked of us. Um, so I just want to say thank you, I know that, um, you're, you're doing the absolute best you can, and I trust what you're saying when you come forward, so thank you for that.
Is there any other discussion on this? Any discussion from the, I'll go to the phone first for any final discussion? All right, Counselor Neitzert, you can have the last word before we'll vote then.
A couple of questions regarding the language. Entertainment facility, I assume would that include things like, uh, indoor establishments that do things like indoor laser tag, video games, all kinds of recreational things along those lines? I'm seeing nods, so I'm going to take that as a yes. And then the other question is, uh, we did get an email shortly before the meeting, somebody brought up, uh, cigar shops, vaping shops, things like that, does anybody have any concern about that, that it's either in here or not in here? So maybe my first question would be, would a cigar bar qualify under the list of bar, and are we?
When you look at the language referenced in the definition of enclosed retail business that promotes public gathering, I mean, you really have to look to that language. Again, a retail business where people come and go, uh, do not fit this definition, so when you look at a vaping store, as opposed to a, you know, a cigar, a smoking lounge, right? I mean, there's a distinction that, I think, when applied, when you apply this definition to those facts, it becomes pretty apparent, and of course, if people have questions, they can call. But there is a distinct difference in the, the, uh, the enclosed retail businesses are enumerated in here, and then it also, again, provides specific exceptions for additional clarity, uh, and then ultimately, if, if they're not there, then they would fall under the section that says, any other for-profit or nonprofit employer, uh, is encouraged to practice social distancing.
Okay, and I'm not well-versed in this, I've never been in a vape shop, and I probably never would, but, uh, it was brought up that supposedly there's congregation of people trying things or doing things in there, so I don't, I guess maybe just keep it on your radar, I, you, you would know better what, what the clientele, what their behaviors are going forward, so, if it needs to be included in the future.
All right, all right, I think we're ready to, on that note, then, take a vote on these, uh, the main motion as amended.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr? Yes.
Stale? Yes.
Brecky? Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero, any other business counsel? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Well, we're adjourned it anyway, Rick.
I said yes.